We love girls' basketball. We love women in sports.
Okay, you guys ready? All right.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Uh, good evening and welcome to the West Orange Board of Education Public Board Meeting on Monday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. I would like to thank all of you here in person and those watching from home for joining us tonight. I'd like to welcome my fellow board members as well as Mr. Moore, Ms. Flowers, and our student liaisons. Uh, Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call?
Good evening, everyone. Roll call, please. Dr. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Stevenson?
Here.
Ms. Vera?
Here.
Mr. Ifker?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Thank you. Notice of meeting. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business act affecting their interests are discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board on January seventh, twenty twenty-five. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and by email to the Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education and posted on the district website. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and may be broadcasted on local TV and the district's website at a future date. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. In consideration of the closed and public meeting of February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker.
Second.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
You helped me out. Thank you, Ms. Vera. Uh, any comments? Hearing done. Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ifker?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next, good evening to our student liaisons, Nina Davis and Abby Rusty. Uh, would you two please share your, uh, student liaison report with us?
Hello, everyone. Happy St. Patrick's Day. Um, yesterday was annual St. Patrick's Day Parade, and Nina and I are so grateful to have been a part of it, walking alongside our superintendent, Mr. Moore, Principal Mr. Guerrero, our wonderful mentor, Ms. Connors, and Board of Ed, Board of Education, uh, member, Ms. Vera. Alongside us are peers from the Absolute Step Team, Marching Band, and Cheer Team joined to march along, showing West Orange pride. In addition, this year's cast of the prom, which will be performed on April fourth, fifth, and sixth, was invited to Columbia High School's very own dress rehearsal of the prom on Wednesday, March twelfth. The students at Columbia put on an amazing show. We would just like to thank them for extending the invitation, and we're so excited for them to come see us as well. I would also like to draw attention to my fellow student liaison, Nina Davis. She was recently awarded with twenty, the twenty twenty-five Essex County Unsung Hero Award. She got this award for her numerous, um, contributions to our community. I am so proud of Nina, incredibly lucky to work with her this year.
That's so nice. Oh, my gosh. Thank you. Um, good evening. This year, our Future Business Leaders of America Club went to a state leadership conference in Atlantic City where they competed in events, attended workshops, and were able to network with people from all over New Jersey who share their common aspirations. Finally, the West Orange High School Girls Basketball Team made it to the state championship for the first time in West Orange High School history. Where they competed at Rutgers University last night at four PM. Although they only lost by three points, we are so proud of them for all of their hard work this season, holding a fifty-eight, forty-eight record.
Thank you for the report, and congratulations again to Nina. Um, next up, we have Mr. Moore. Would you give, please share your superintendent's report with us?
Thank you, President Rock. First and foremost, we're very proud of our girls' basketball team as they've reached new heights here at West Orange. We thank them for their leadership and thank them for setting the pathway for our future mountaineers. I appreciate that. Next, I'd like to, I'd like us to point out, I'd like us to acknowledge, actually, scouts from Troop Two. They're here in our audience tonight to achieve their merit badge in fulfillment of community, communication, and citizenship. So let's give a round of applause for scouts of Troop Two, uh, led by Scout Master Jack Dean, and I believe Mr. Brennan, if they're in the audience. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. We appreciate it, and we'll one hundred percent support our scouts. Thank you for your commitment. Um, next, I would like to introduce a former board member and president of the board. You're back. I'd like to welcome former President Terry Trigg Scales, who will do a presentation on behalf of our African-American Heritage Scholarship Fund.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be back. So I think we're gonna see a video. Either one. Either one. Oh, that's a good one. We know, I think we know him. Okay. So we're gonna watch this video, and then I'm just gonna say a few words after.
Fortnum, Skyline, and every care of West Orange schools sees over five hundred students graduate to move on to higher education at various colleges and universities. Unfortunately, Skyline costs the higher education.
Significant barrier for many of our students.
Hope for scholarship that provided three hundred thousand dollars to West Orange graduates.
The Holcomb Scholarship Fund has been instrumental in supporting our students' dreams.
Who could help make these college dreams come true for the future West Orange with the tax deduction contribution to the whole scholarship. Please give now to the Hope for Scholarship. Here's how.
And while we're queuing up the, we're there.
Hi, my name is Olivia Raymond. I am graduating class of twenty twenty-four at West Orange High School.
My name is Alicia Jermaine, West Orange High School, graduating class of twenty twenty-four.
I'm Joelle Robertson, West Orange High School, class of twenty twenty-four.
I'm currently attending Brown University, studying public health and policy economics.
I'm currently attending Rutgers University, New Brunswick, studying biological sciences on the pre-med track.
I'm a first-year student at Seton Hall University, majoring in psychology, and I earned a three-point-nine GPA in my first semester.
A scholarship from the West Orange African Heritage Organization really did help make my college journey possible.
A college education is invaluable. Thank you, West Orange African Heritage Organization, for the Holcomb Scholarship. Please give now for the Holcomb Scholarship.
Without the scholarship I received from the West Orange African Heritage Organization, I wouldn't have been able to attend the University of Rochester.
Thank you. I am actually standing in for Brent this evening, who is the vice president of our organization. Brent had a personal emergency and asked me if I'd stop by. I said, "Well, you know, I've been there a few times, so I, I don't mind." Um, and so to make this short and sweet, we generally do two big fundraisers each year, and one is our denim and diamonds dance, where we collect money for the scholarship, and the other is men who cook. We were unable to do denim and diamonds this year, and so we decided to do a public, um, ask for the scholarship, the Holcomb Scholarship Fund. And I don't know if you missed it, but over the last twenty-two, twenty-three years, we have awarded three hundred thousand dollars to students here at West Orange High School. And so we're asking the public, we thought this would be a good venue, um, and especially a beautiful crowd tonight, to please make a contribution so that we can, can continue to do that. And just another little public relations bit, men who cook is coming up on June eighth, and we're looking for men, Mr. Rock, Mr. Moore, everybody. And we don't care if you cook, but we want you to serve. You can get help cooking. So I thank you for these few minutes this evening, and please visit our website and please make a donation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next this evening, we take an opportunity to recognize our high school mock trial team for their outstanding achievement. You can clap for the mock trial team. Absolutely. For their outstanding achievement at the recent Essex County Finals. I ask our high school principal, Mr. Oscar Guerrero, to please come forward so that we can salute our students tonight.
Everyone, uh, it's an absolute pleasure and honor to recognize and acknowledge the hard work and perseverance of a wonderful group of students that make up our mock trial team. Um, just the recap that I've received from, uh, from our advisors is that, you know, we, we were a historic team. It's the first time in school history that we made, uh, the Essex County Finals. Um, and although we came up a bit short, Mr. Edelstein had shared that two of the judges, um, who are superior court judges, mentioned how it was the greatest performance by a group of students that they had seen in, in many years. Uh, and it's a testament to these group of students who've been preparing since the fall. And, uh, before I call them up and present them with this certificate, uh, I'd like to first recognize their unbelievable, uh, staff members who worked very hard to prepare them. Uh, Mr. Anthony, please stand when I call your name, just to be recognized. Mr. Anthony Edelstein. Ms. Janine Sullivan. And Mr. William Redden. Thank you. Uh, also want to quickly mention that Assemblyman, Assemblywoman, uh, Begoli wanted to be here tonight. There are some citations, oh, that we do have, I thought we didn't have them, um, that we will be presenting to the students, so I will call them up one at a time. Just please stand in the front, and we'll have a picture at the end. First up, we have Rebecca Blum. Malina Constantine. Leah Delita. Daniela De Palma. Del Mari Ferguson. Dominic Fondetto. Lusay Helanghorn. Lady Malik. Charles Mitchell Rector. Grace Moran. Akira Mura. Joseph Palumbo. Priya Swander. And Harmony Vincent. Congratulations, everybody. Yeah, no, that's him. Of course, yeah.
Uh, Begoli, so this is the, uh, from the New Jersey Legislature, right, Assemblywoman Begoli, Assemblywoman Begoli. Um, so it does say, uh, State of New Jersey, General Assembly Citation, commendations and praise are extended to, fill in the name of the student, by the Citisnery of the twenty-seventh New Jersey Legislative District through their elected representative for their incredible contribution as a member of the West Orange High School Mock Trial Team, resulting in the team reaching the finals of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five mock trial competition for the first time in school history. And then there's, there's there's a letter as well to each student, which just says, "I want to congratulate you on helping West Orange High School team reach the finals, uh, for the first time in school history. This accomplishment demonstrates the hard work and dedication that has driven you to thrive as a student and as a mock trial team member. Your success reveals the heights that students across our West Orange community can strive to accomplish. I hope this achievement can lead you to even more great things in academics and beyond." Okay? And just, just to give people an idea of what's involved, the students have worked on this case since the beginning of October. So since the beginning of October into February, they were working, we work both, both sides of the case. This year was a case about a, a championship show dog, uh, that died, and the owner was suing the pet product company because she alleged that a product she used on the, on the, on the dog caused its death. But in any event, they worked incredibly hard. We met here on Saturdays, on Sundays, uh, so tremendous effort by this whole team.
Mock trial one more time. Okay, thank you to the advisors and the students for making history, once again representing West Orange. Um, at this time now, it's time to present the preliminary budget presentation. Um, I'll ask the board members to sit up front, and I will, uh, present the presentation. I don't know, it feels weird. Is that all right? I think so. Okay. All right, everyone. Time to present the, our preliminary budget for the 25-26 school year. And of course, Superintendent Hayden Moore. I'd like to acknowledge our board members, President Brian Rock, Vice President Robert Ifker, Board Member Dea Bryant, Board Member Erica Stevenson, Board Member Maria Vera. Of course, we have our administrators up front, Connie Salabino, Special Services. Like, Liz Veniziano, our Human Resources, and of course, our Assistant Superintendent Ebony Temendis. Let me catch up to you. Okay, to start, we talk a little bit about our district and our total enrollment. You can take a look and find your school, you can see your own school's enrollment. But just to, so that I don't go through each portion of the slide, this will also be posted after tonight on our website, so you can take a closer look. Our enrollment this year was 7,191. Our enrollment last year was 6,876. We've increased 315 students just this year. If you look at that number and compare it to Hazel Avenue School or some of the elementaries, it's almost an example of a total building that we've increased this year. Our budgetary goals continue to be to increase and support student achievement while optimizing district spending, continue to provide funding to maintain a safe environment in all buildings. So now we talk about the budget, budget challenges. So what are some of our budget challenges that everyone's hearing about? One, we've had significant decrease in state aid. Two, annual increase in major operational costs that exceed over the 2%. Examples, required expenditures, expenditures that we must meet. Salaries, so far, has been up 3% to 4%. This year, health benefits, 10%. Special education tuition for out-of-district placements have increased 6%. District coverage insurance for the entire district has been up 11%. And transportation has gone up 3.5%. This creates a substantial budget deficit. So I know a lot of people have heard, what are we going to do in terms of a tax levy? Well, it starts with West Orange, and we will get to it later on in another slide, but taxes is raised for our homeowners here in West Orange, our residents in West Orange, as there was a new tax assessment. So in consideration, the board's been very conscious and asked us to take a look at what we can do. We started somewhere with, if we don't add to the taxes at all, what would that look like? We'll take a look. We'd be approximately $11 million in deficit. We would need to have, to cut 110 to 120 FTEs, which are full-time employees. We'd have a severe reduction in staff and academic programs. We would lose our co-curricular activities, which you know and I know are a big, a big definition of who we are in West Orange, but we would lose our athletics, our band, our drama, professional development, and our academic interventions. We would have to cut vital capital projects. We need, and as those of you in buildings with leaks know, that we need to repair roofs. We need to replace roofs. Our HVAC, if you're in buildings, you know the heat's too hot, too cold, that, those repairs need to be done. Many of those units need to be upgraded. And on some of our buildings, we have structural repairs to make, as some buildings are shifting, and we'll have to take a look at how to repair those, but they're not cheap to do as well. So we're, so we looked at that without adding. If we went to the 2% and used our bank cap, which would result in a 2.3%, we still would be in a deficit of 8 million. Which unfortunately means that we still would have to cut somewhere near 80 to 90 jobs, FTEs. We'd still have, we'll have a significant reduction in staff. Our academic programs and our professional development will take a hit, but we'll be able to maintain some of it. We'll be able to maintain our co-curricular activities, such as athletics, band, drama, and our academic interventions, which we really use especially to support some of our younger grades. They're very important. And of course, now, vital capital projects, we would still continue to work on our plan in terms of repairing roofs, upgrading the HVAC systems, and trying to repair some of the structural damages to some of our older buildings. So let's take a look at the revenue. As you know, we're a school system, so we don't really, we're not a business, so revenue is, is really relied upon the taxpayer. So I won't go through everything, but if you take a look at state aid, we were cut $1 million, and if you remember last year, we were in a deficit last year, and we used the bank cap to make up some of that. This year, we want to use what's remaining of that bank cap, which will take us to zero in reserves. But we, besides state aid, I think it's important that you know other areas in which we were cut. So extraordinary aid, transportation, we were cut $850,000. For, let's, let's look at SEMI, which is our special ed program, in which we received reimbursement for some of our Medicaid students. That went from $286,000 to $38,000, we received. We still have to support those students, but, and we will, but it's a $248,000 loss. I think those are the total, those are very, those are the two examples I wanted to give you, but if you look at the bottom, you will see that in comparison, we're suffering a 2.7 percentage deficit in revenue from just last year. So, and the, in terms of dollars, it's a $5,378,000 cut, or deficit, I should say. Okay. I have notes on this, excuse me. Let's look at the expenditure comparison. This slide represents the expenditures. The first column represents the actual budget, as you can take and see there, and the second column represents the projected budget with reductions. The third column represents the projected operational budget cost for 2025-26, if you take a look at it. So if you look at the, where we are trying to save money, we're looking at saving, decreasing by about $5 million since, from last year, to save some money. You can go through each line item, if you'd like to see where we would try to gain some savings. But operational costs are very difficult to do too much cutting, because we do need electric, we need gas, we need lights, we need some of the things that are essential, transportation, things like that. So that's just our expenditure, but we would try to gain some savings by saving money. Unfortunately, some of that comes with salaries. Okay. So people ask about the cuts and how the state makes certain decisions. We tried to point out here what has happened here, and if you read the slide, with the new tax assessment, which recently took place to homeowners, the above comparison displays the average assessed home value has increased approximately $300,000. If you take a look at the town value, that almost doubled. And now the average home where we used to work off of $336,000, we now have to work off of $615,000. At the 2.3 tax increases to the residents, we're looking at about $20.16 per month, per household. For the year, that would be $242. So this is a preliminary with a high overview, there isn't no, there, there is no, what are we cutting, what's this, we're cutting that, we don't have that as of yet. But we are working on figuring out those types of unfortunate occurrences that need to take place in order for us to reach these numbers, but we don't have exact granular cuts that we would make. But this is a timeline on what we're working with. So today, we needed to do a preliminary budget for you, which we did on the 17th. By April 25th, we have to have a county approval of a budget where they'll review and see if that, if our budget is reasonable, and if we're all in line and everything is legally intact. And then on May 5th is when we will have the vote for the final budget. So it's a short timeline, it's not very long. After this preliminary meeting, of course, there'll be more meetings with the board, and we would do, you know, lots of work, taking a look at where cuts would need to be made. We'll look at capital projects that have to be done, what can be delayed. Not an easy conversation for us here, West Orange, but as you saw, neighboring districts might, you know, these, this is an unusual at this point. However, you know, happening in West Orange, for me, I've been here a long time, it is unprecedented to me. I'd never imagined that we would be in a situation as such, but, you know, the numbers are there, and, you know, for the taxpayers, you know, we do have some responsibility to them, but we do plead that we do need some of funding. I know that their taxes have increased, I live here, so mine as well, but to fund our schools and to keep it operational, we do need help from our residents as well. So, for now, the preliminary, but this would conclude the preliminary budget, I appreciate you listening. What I would ask, though, is that the board returns back to the dais, and, you know, as the night goes on, questions or comments and so on, we would be happy to listen to as well. So thank you for that. Yeah, we're all set. Okay. All right. Thank you, the board. Okay. So I just want to, before we conclude the superintendent's report, I just want to give our HIB report. At this time, I present the HIV Intimidation and Bullying Report. Since the last board meeting, there's been four investigations throughout the district. I reviewed and summarized each was deter, each investigation, and it was determined that one incident met the criteria and all, and the other three were unfounded. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next, we have, also just for the benefit of the audience, we've all met individually with the administration and asked them many questions about the budgets, that's why we didn't go to individual Q and A from board members, but you can trust that we've asked our questions of the administration at this point, and already had our questions answered as, you know, well as they could be for the moment. But we'll move on to committee reports. Is there anything from curriculum, Ms. Bryant?
No reports.
Okay. Mr. Stevenson?
Mr. Rock, I have no report with respect to policy or negotiations, however, I want to make a comment and say, this evening, I had the honor as both a board member and a parent to attend the West Orange Elementary Art Exposition at the West Orange Public Library. Congratulations to all of those elementary school students, including my fifth grader, who has their artwork displayed in our public library, so I want to very quickly thank our West Orange Elementary Art faculty. If I've mispronounced any names, please excuse me. Kaitlin Karasen at Washington School, Cecilia Ferrera at Mount Pleasant School, Michelle Ledecima at Hazel School, Melanie Rocanelli at Redwood Elementary School, Nicole Seibert at Kelly School, Adam Swart from St. Cloud, and Sarah Tracy at Gregory School. Thank you to all of our wonderful art teachers for their support of our students. Thank you.
Last month, I had the pleasure to be invited to Roosevelt Middle School to be part of the diversity art gallery opening. And no words to express that it was amazing job from the seven and eight graders artists. You know, basically, it caught my attention from, you know, very specific student from the, I would like to say, you know, it's, I can't remember the last name, but it was from the eighth grade. And the way he put all his effort into drawing with that, you know, it was the time that he invests and the kind of support he received from the teachers. It was really good to visit Roosevelt Middle School. Thank you to the Vice Principal, Ms. Betances, and Mr. Hush for the invitation, and, you know, I hope we can keep working with the students, because we have, we will have great artists from middle school to high school. And once again, it was February the 20th when I went there, and, you know, I'm expecting to keep receiving more invitations to observe each one of the students' project or final work during, you know, for, for this. One, one more reason to support, you know, these activities, because we keep the students safe and we promote all the talent that they have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. On top of all the budget information that we have to deal with, there was something else that we have to deal with, which came a bit unexpected, which is the leaf blower ordinance that maybe you've heard of. Town Council passed an ordinance, I won't go into the details, you can read it on their website, essentially outlawing gas blowers, you have to go to electric, or, there's a timeframe for this, there's all kinds of rules involved in it. I had gone to town council to see if maybe we could be exempt, and we're not. So we cannot pay for that, we cannot afford that. On top of everything else, where we're going back and forth about cuts to the budget, cuts to personnel, which are horrible, it's, in good conscience, we can't just add the leaf blowers on top of that and just cut more position, it can't do that. So what we're working on now, on
So what we're working on now, unfortunately, is that Mountain Top League, any rec group that uses the fields, the buildings, anything that's part of the Board of Education, we're going to have to talk about adding a surcharge or a tax to the users. Because as you see, our budget doesn't have any fat. We can't just add another however many hundreds of thousands of dollars on it for the leaf blower ordinance. So we want to work with town council. We hope we can, but this is, somebody's got to pay for this and it shouldn't be the Board of Education. It shouldn't be everyone here tonight. So that's, I give that report as the liaison to town council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iffker. You want to?
I didn't know we were doing shout outs.
Go ahead.
Thanks to all the elementary school teachers and coordinators who coordinated Reading Across America Week. That was so fun. It was so great to spend time with the kids and they were so excited. And so thanks for the invite and thanks for organizing.
Thank you for that, Dr. Bryant. That reminds me to add that to my report as well. So I'll start with a few things to share in my president's report. First, some, some good news and updates from Kelly Elementary School. March is Women's History Month in our West Orange, well, this isn't about Kelly, but I guess we'll get to Kelly in a second. March is Women's History Month and our West Orange High School Girls Basketball Team is, I should finish reading before I start talking. Sorry. Rewind the clock. March is Women's History Month and our West Orange High School Girls Basketball Team is scheduled to visit Kelly Elementary School to speak our students about the contributions of women to our history and to society. This event culminates with young women putting our students through basketball drills. Kelly will be welcoming the United Color Guard in April in recognition of Autism Awareness Month. Final details of the event are being worked on and the entire school is looking forward to this with great excitement. For World Read Loud Day on February fifth, Kelly Elementary School hosted countless members from the community who came to school to read their favorite children's book to our students. And our fifth grade students participated in an international celebration in the form of an assembly, which was filled with music, artifacts, and dance, recognizing the various countries that our students' families are from. Students were dressed in traditional garb from their home country. Every country was represented with either a song or a dance. And then as Dr. Bryant mentioned, was Read Across Week. I was invited to come to Hazel Elementary and Gregory. So thank you to those two schools. I'm always happy to come read. So if any other schools next year want to book time with me, I'm happy to come out. It is a great experience to share that reading. Although I learned last year to check the end of the book before you start reading it, because I found a book that had some cute polar bears on the front. I don't know if anybody knows this book, but in the end of the book, one of the polar bear's friends dies. So I'm sitting in front of a class reading the book and I realized at the same time as the students that the polar bear was going to die. So if you're ever reading, check the ending. I read the first like half and thought, this, this is super cute. No. Word to the wise. Also recently had the pleasure to attend the mayor's State of the City address, which was hosted by our Chamber of Commerce along with Superintendent Moore and Mr. Guerrero. They always honor some of our students. Our top ten students from the high school here were there. And I'll share a little bit about what they've done and where they're going to college. And as a marching band student, person myself, I was proud to hear that almost all of the top ten are marching band students or color guard students. But congratulations to all them for, for their accomplishments. And then not, two, two final topics that are a little more serious and less glitzy and fun. As Mr. Iffker mentioned, we, we as a district now have to figure out how to deal with a potential leaf blower ban in town. And look, as a private citizen, I don't mind. I blow my own leaves. If I have to buy an electric leaf blower, that's fine. And it doesn't cost me that much money. But as a district, our business administrators told us that's going to cost somewhere upwards of a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars. As you heard Mr. Moore tell us all, we're short on money at the moment. And so we have to, you know, find a way to come up with money for that. And there are no good solutions to that, but if someone out there has a way to solve that problem or square that circle, I'd encourage you to let me know. But like Mr. Iffker, I was disappointed to hear that the town council passed that ordinance and wouldn't make an exception for us or discuss that in any way. And finally, the, you know, what Mr. Moore mentioned, state aid in his budget report. Just wanted to talk about that for a moment without getting too into the weeds on the details. When you're right, when you hear the governor talk about state aid in his budget address, it always sounds great. They're funding schools at a hundred percent and some schools got a lot of money. My old district, East Orange, actually got an increase for the first time in a long time. But when you look under the covers, a lot of it is a sleight of hand where they're kind of moving things around. And so our problem, that we've been dealt, the hand we've been dealt is that as home valuations go up, that reduces the amount of aid the district thinks that we are owed. On paper, the home valuations, not just the assessed value, but the equalized valuations they use in the calculations continue to go up. So they went up from seven point eight billion to eight point four billion last year. And the way they calculated our local fair share, which is what they think we can raise in property taxes, went up fifteen percent from last year to this year. I don't know if anybody understands math, but if our tax levy can only go up two point three percent, but they think it can go up this much, that leaves a big gap. The other piece of the puzzle is that the adequacy budget, what they think it costs to run our schools, went up seven point five percent. So, and that, that's essentially a measure of inflation of how costs go up. We all pay more for everything. I pay more for, you know, the electricity at home, the groceries when I go out to shop for the house. We pay a lot of those expenses as well in one shape, form, or another. And so if those costs go up at seven point five percent, which represent our budget essentially, and property taxes only go up two point three percent, again, that's a math problem that's, that's hard to square. So I know that the budget presentation can be a little bit shocking, can be a little hard to absorb. But at the end of the day, we're facing constraints that are, that are put on us by the larger state, by the larger economy and trying to make the best of what we can. That's what we've all been elected to do. But keep in mind that some of these things are out of our control. And while I will continue to, to reach out to our legislators and continue to advocate for our district to get more state funding, because in the long run, that's the only way to solve our budget crisis, is that the state steps in and funds us adequately. In the meantime, we have to pass a balanced budget. So I wish I had better answers or better news, but as I looked over the funding information that Ms. Flowers sent me, that's two things that stood out to me that I thought was important to share with you. So with that, my president's report is over and we will move on to public comment from the public on agenda items only. Any community member who would like to make comments or ask questions, please come to the podium at this time. Please state your name and home address for the record, then begin your comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any members of the audience tonight who wish to make a public comment?
My name is. My name is Jay Wecht. My South Orange address for the past thirty years, half my life, is Thirty-Six Gilbert Place, also known as Roosevelt Middle School. So yes, half my life. That means, of course, that I've been around the block. When I first entered this room thirty years ago, this was called the library and the term LMC did not even exist. It was a very different time thirty years ago, when every new year began with the number nineteen and this new thing called the internet was something we all thought was right out of Star Trek. It was a different time in the West Orange public schools too, but its mission was always the same, just as it was over a hundred years ago, when none of us were even around. The mission of the public schools was to serve the children of West Orange. That apparently has changed. Now, believe it or not, I've been around long enough where I have students say to me, Mr. Wecht, you taught my mom. This, of course, makes me think of my own mom. Many of the people who are in front of me right now, for whom I hold some genuine affection, know a lot about me, but did you know that my mom was once the president of the Board of Ed? I grew up about twenty minutes from here in Pomp and Lakes. And when I was a teenager, my mom became the president of the Pomp and Lakes Board of Education. When she grew well and would eventually succumb to what took her, one of the first things she had to do was step down from the board. But I remember all she had to contend with when she was on it. Hayden, her, her board hired a superintendent they ultimately had to dismiss. Why she didn't hire you, you know, is beyond me. She would have loved you as much as we all do. I learned a lot from my mom, especially when she was the president of the board. The most valuable lesson I learned is that the children come first. Jerry Tarnoff, by the way, told me that knowing that was the secret to his success. So when the fire alarm goes off, you take the children out of the building. And when you're teaching and all of a sudden a storm appears outside, you close the window. You do not let the storm enter the classroom. The children come first. So I have to wonder, why is this board in front of me forgetting that the children come first? Why on earth are you allowing the storm to enter our classrooms? Times are hard. We, we all know that's true. But as parents, we know that sacrifices have to be made for our children. I know that every time I sign the check for my son's tuition for Cedar Hall University. Times are hard and hard choices need to be made, but the kids shouldn't be aware of that. They shouldn't have to wonder why they have fewer teachers and why the teacher they do have keeps forgetting their name because there are twenty-nine other kids sitting in that same classroom whose names they, they need to remember. The children come first. I know that there's a code of ethics one must comply with when you're a member of the board. I know this because my good friend, who used to be the president of this board, shared it with me. I looked it over and I was surprised that it was only four words long. You know what those four, four words are? The children come first. Brian, Robert, Dea, Eric, Maria, Hayden, Tanya, what are you doing? We all see the storm, so I'm, I'm asking you to help us close the windows in our classrooms.
I love things.
These children are the future of West Orange, New Jersey, and our, our nation. The children come first. Thank you. The children come first. The children come first.
Yeah.
Timer's working now?
Yes, it's working.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Josh Goldfarb, but I'm the president of the West Orange Education Association. I'm also a lifelong West Orange resident, habitual voter, and taxpayer, and my taxes did go up as well. I came here with a different speech. There's a lot of blue ink on it now. And as frustrating as that was, I'm very happy that I had to make so many corrections. First of all, thank you. I am happy to hear that these zero percent increase is seemingly off the table. You did the right thing and it's appreciated. As a Board of Education, you have no power to control the money provided by the state, but you do have control over the school budget. You mentioned even with the two point three percent increase, that eighty to ninety full-time employees will likely lose their job. These cuts are significant and they place us on a course, and they plot us on a course for this district and town that are going to have longstanding repercussions. I assume that you're looking to cut extracurriculars before attacking the classroom, before we lose any specific teachers. Because any cuts that impact instruction before sports and, and extracurriculars is unacceptable. I'm going to repeat that. Any cuts that impact a classroom before extenuating all other possibilities is unacceptable. Special education students, they're going to get the resources that they need because the district is legally bound to provide their services. But what about all of the other students? How will they fare? The cost savings will fall on their shoulders. So what picture is being painted by this budget? Maxed out class sizes, less attention on each student in class, struggling students not receiving the extra help they desperately need. And with these larger class sizes come lower test scores, multi-language learners struggling in a maxed out classroom to become proficient in English. Fewer student assistance counselors to help our students in crisis, fewer security guards to keep our children safe. Is that something that we're proposing? Is that something that we're going to have to deal with? Will we see overburdened counselors who will have less time to help guide our students through their educational journey? Will we have fewer nurses to patch up the cuts and bruises our kids get on the playground? What about administrative assistants, tech workers, CST members, therapists? They all play a vital part in the education of our children and they all play a crucial part in providing our students with a world-class education. The paraprofessionals in the classrooms, will there be just as many? They don't just help the students that they are charged to helping. We all know that they help every single person in that classroom and they need to stay. What about the amazing electives that we offer our students? I went to this high school. I learned a lot from these electives. These classes introduce our students to opportunities they never knew existed and unlock interests in towns that they never knew that they had. Let's not steal those opportunities from them. Right now, West Orange is a great place to be a teacher and let's keep it that way. In a time when all districts are facing teaching shortages, encouraging educators to see greener pastures, which this would do. Mr. Goldfarb, could you wrap it up, please? Absolutely. Good educators will not want to come here and some will leave to find a district where they feel respected and valued. You ran for Board of Education because. A little faster, perhaps the last sentence. Absolutely. Do the right thing and vote to increase the budget. Thank you.
Hey, good evening. My name is Molly Eisen. I'm a sixth grade teacher, a West Orange resident, and vice president of the West Orange Education Association. Like Josh, I also had to frantically rewrite my speech, so now it looks like what I would hope my students' writing would look like if they actually used their editing checklist. So, so I'm very straightforward with my students, so I'll be straightforward with you. Your proposed staffing cuts would be devastating for our students. They will hurt our schools for years to come in ways that will be immediate and ways that will only become apparent over time. We teachers and staff are the ones on the ground. We're the ones who are told to do without. Yet all the decisions come from up high with zero constant consultation with the people who actually see and experience what happens every day. I urge you to collaborate with your staff as you continue getting out of this budget mess. There are about two hundred and eleven W O E A members who reside in West Orange or roughly twenty-two percent of our membership. We are also feeling the tax reassessment, believe me. We all are. We aren't ignoring that. But talk to any of us or the parents of our public school students, and we are one hundred percent against the decision to cut staff. Let me be clear, you are not representing the best interests of the students. Your decision to raise the budget is very good. You're very pleasantly surprised sitting here, actually. But what you're proposing would still be catastrophic. There are options here. We all know that everything won't magically be solved, even if we wish it would, but there are ways to lessen the impact. Let's be clear, you are choosing not to use these options. You are choosing to cut right into the heart of our district. This and the mess you will lead us into is on you and we will have no choice but to remember that. Do what's right by us, but most importantly, do what's right by our kids.
My name is Mark Legatic. I reside at Twelve Fairway Drive. I stand before you tonight as a proud graduate of West Orange High School, a member of the West Orange Educators Association, a taxpayer, and a soon-to-be parent of a child in the West Orange Public Schools. I know that we are faced with some tough decisions regarding finances in the coming weeks, but I wanted to speak briefly about how some of these things being considered would have major effects on our teaching staff and students. I am here today because of all that the West Orange schools have afforded me. I learned to play the trumpet across the street at Pleasantale Elementary School, when it was called Pleasantale. Thirty-two years after picking up the instrument, I am a music educator and active performer and owe all my, of my entire career to the inspiring educators and opportunities that West Orange schools have afforded, afforded me as a student. As an educator, I left a tenured position as a middle school band director to come back to work in West Orange. I wanted to be part of one of the best teams of educators in the state. After ten years of teaching in West Orange, I can tell you that we are one of the best districts in the states. We are the envy of many around us because we are supported as professionals and given everything we need to provide the very best education to our students. Additionally, our staff is well-supported in our contracts, which is why many teachers opt to spend a majority, if not all of their careers here in West Orange. Our district's social media pages are constantly touting our successes and student achievements. Our staff is committed to working hard. Our students succeed. Everyone is committed every day to coming in and working hard for our students. My wife and I, who is in her twentieth year here at West Orange High School, are so committed to the mission and believe so much in our schools that we sold our home two years ago. We fought every incoming buyer in West Orange and finally were able to purchase our home here in West Orange. We are, we know how good the schools are. We know how the offerings and opportunities for the students are second to none. And we know that there is no other community of people and educators that we would want to educate our child than here in the West Orange schools. Parents are enrolling their children in our schools at an alarming rate, with nearly all our elementary schools and middle schools nearing capacity. Now is not the time to cut funds. Cutting funding will only hurt our administrators and their ability to create suitable learning and teaching environments. Increasing class sizes and having less teachers in front of students is not giving, is not setting our students and faculty up for success. So with this, I humbly ask the board to think deeply about these cuts. I know the burden is heavy and that this charge is placed upon you. I know that you are appreciative of all that the schools have offered your children and that are appreciative in speaking about the Reading for America and. and the ability to go see your own child's art at the art show. My hope is that one day, my child will be afforded the same success and the same opportunities. And I know that we will work together hand in hand to do what's right for our kids. Thank you.
Good evening. For those that don't know, my name is Deb Cohen. I'm currently in my twenty-sixth year of teaching in the West Orange School District. As both a former Madison Board of Education member and former town council member, I understand how difficult the budgeting process can be. As a teacher, I have been through, as many of the people here, the cuts in two thousand and ten caused by then-Governor Chris Christie when school budgets were slashed, as well as a budget that led to above-normal cuts in two thousand and sixteen. However, I have some major concerns regarding the proposed cuts presented tonight. One of which is that if you look at all of the presentations going back to two thousand and ten that are on the website, the preliminary one always had an estimate of where the cuts were coming from. Where is that tonight? We realize it changes and nothing is set in stone, but it doesn't even exist. If federal funding does get cut in some way, how does that impact things? I know we can't predict the future on that. However, the following depends on where we go. How can we advocate for things if not given prior to that, to April twenty-fifth? But we teach in a school. You want things to get spread fast? Tell anybody in the school building and between the students and teachers, it will be all over a building of two thousand students and three hundred staff members within less than twenty-four hours. So with that, many classes have been having discussions. Some of the students ended up are coming here and speaking tonight. And we don't know the exact nature of all the cuts because we haven't been given any information. But some of the teachers who know their classes have been cut for next year, the electives have been told and have been talking about it as a learning opportunity for the students. The scariest one for me that is known, there may be others, is the glaring cuts in all three courses related to journalism. Intro to Journalism, Broadcast Television, and Newspaper are all on the chopping block. How in this day and age, when that is how we all live and survive is by media, can we do that? These students learn what good and bad journalism is, how to report effectively, how to cover news without bias and with facts. Journalism's been around since the printing press, maybe longer in some fashion, and is always important in society. The hands-on experiences provided through videoing, concerts, town events, such as the St. Patrick's Day Parade and Memorial Day Parade, and much more, allow students to learn how to cover and report real-world events. I'm a mother of three former high school athletes and understand the importance of them. However, our goal as educators is just that, to ensure that all students have the ability to learn and that the resources they need are available. I hope there's a balance to what's being cut before classrooms are hit. We need to focus not just on our AP students, but on our lower-level students. Larger class sizes impact them the most. They have less opportunity to ask questions, they're less comfortable, and they don't get the attention they need. The choice, less choices in electives lead for moral achievements, gaps for our students. Many of these courses lead to students majoring in and finding careers for post-high school and college life. It's imperative that if cuts have to be made, which it sounds like they do, outside the classroom is looked at before we touch anything K to twelve in the classroom.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm not going to sing tonight, but that's okay. But, um, no, my name is Darren Nurse. I'm at six Dartmouth Road. Uh, one of the things I wanted to say is, you know, before we do anything, I think everybody need to just stop and just think and look everything over. I think we can do more. I think there's other things that can be done. Uh, I'm also part of Gregory PTA. And, you know, the PTA does like a phenomenal job of fundraising, right? And there's things in this town that we can do. You, you have the town at your disposal. You have teachers here that grew up in the town and dedicated themselves to come back to teach here because that's how much they believe in the town. So I think what we need to do is start reaching out to more of the people in the town because sometimes as executives, we don't have all the answers. But as executives and as managers, if we reach out to the people that surround us, they can help us get to those answers. And I am more than certain that these people in this town are more than willing to help out before anything got cut, changed, or anything like that. Um, when you look at the situation where, you know, it's easy to say the word "cut," right? Until it's you that's getting cut. And then now the question become is, why am I being cut? You know, and that's, and that's not, and that's not a fair thing for anyone. So I've watched these teachers, you know, put the work in and do the things they need to do in order to make these children be who they are. You know, just watching this marvelous team over here of kids that did a pre-trial, watching this Cub Scout team over here doing what they did. So we need to just fall back. We need to think about other things what we can do. How can we raise capital, right, in order to cover the things? Maybe we need to become a town that's self-sustaining. Maybe we not, maybe we not need to reach outside and look inside. And we can start doing that, then I think we'd be in a better position as opposed to just cutting everything every time we come into this position. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Moore, and fellow community members. Uh, my name is Haven Burton, and I come before you tonight not only as a concerned resident, but as the mother of three children in the West Orange Public Schools. Like so many families here, my husband and I chose this town because of its diversity, its values, and most of all, its schools. I have one child in general education, one who receives special education services, and another who receives benefits from both. I have seen firsthand what a well-funded, well-supported school district can do, not just for students who thrive in a traditional setting, but for students who need individualized instruction, speech therapy, occupational therapy, smaller class sizes, and teachers who truly understand how to meet them where they are. This is what West Orange does so well, and this is what we are at risk of losing. A budget shortfall that will hurt our children hurts everyone, especially families like mine. And this is not just an inconvenience, it is devastating. My children, like so many others, rely on individualized support of dedicated educators, therapists, and specialists. They rely on schools that are structured, inclusive, and enriching. They rely on a district that has long prided itself on ensuring every child gets what they need to succeed. What happens when that funding disappears? We will be left to catch the students who fall through the cracks. West Orange is not shrinking, it is growing, just as we've observed this evening. New families are moving in, housing developments are expanding, and enrollment numbers are rising, and it is not going to slow down. More and more families are choosing West Orange for its strong schools, particularly its special education programs. Now let's be clear, our district is known for excellence in special education. Families move here specifically because of the services that we provide. We educate a higher-than-average percentage of students with disabilities because we do it well. This is not a liability, this is a point of pride. But if we don't invest in maintaining that excellence, we will no longer be able to provide the support that these students deserve. Now listen, we already see how difficult it is to meet the needs of this community and how we will manage with further cutbacks is, I have no idea. But personally, I visited my daughter's classroom today. She's in a DI classroom, an ID classroom, at Redwood Elementary. Um, she's a wonderful, wonderful teacher. When we observed the classroom last year, uh, she had six students in her classroom. And we were very excited about the opportunity to be in a classroom that was going to be an environment where she could flourish. Um, this year, she has fourteen students and six teachers and paraprofessionals in the classroom. And I'm going to tell you, they're doing a wonderful job, and it is chaotic. Um, with six adult teachers and aides, um, they're not even at the legal limit, which is sixteen students and additional aides. A subject worth noting, but deserving a much bigger attention. Um, while the board has no control over state funding, it does have the power to advocate for our fair share. The legalization of marijuana has generated hundreds of millions of dollars in tax revenue for New Jersey. With these projections only increasing for the coming years, and the state must prioritize public education, especially in districts like-
Could you please wrap it up?
Yep. Um, yes. So what I would ask is that you advocate for additional state funding. And I know that it's difficult, but West Orange's strength has always been in its people, its educators, its family, and its students. And now is the time to come together, not to cut back. Investing in our schools is not a burden, it's an investment in our community's future. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nai McKinney, and I reside at one oh seven High Street, West Orange. I am committed to continue my academic and athletic career at Howard University, and I am a co-editor-in-chief of the school's newspaper, The Pioneer, for a second year. It is our understanding that every journalism course is predicted to be cut in the following school year. The Pioneer's leadership team are present today to express the direct negative impact that this cut will have on our student's success. Our three main points for the night are budget management and priorities, impacting students' future successes, and the larger impact. Our first point addresses budgeting and priorities. Here at West Orange, I am a student athlete. The term "student athlete" ensures academics are prioritized first before athletics. And because I value this idea, I have seen great success. However, West Orange has not honored this idea seen by these course cuts. Sports teams have parent booster clubs that can raise additional funds, unlike academic programs which are limiting in fundraising opportunities. Therefore, it seems sincerely obvious that academics should be prioritized in the Board of Education's budgets. The variety of electives offered at West Orange High School gives opportunities to our diverse student body, including the journalism curriculum. By eliminating these courses, specifically Newspaper Class, what does it say to allow upper-class, less-diverse schools to run their publications and not ours? The Pioneer staff has worked diligently to keep our school and town united and highlights the successes of West Orange in all avenues. Again, our district has overemphasized athletics when we are more than just a bunch of sports teams. So The Pioneer encompasses this fact. The ability to write on endless topics has allowed us to highlight the school's achievements, arts, cultures, celebrations, and athletics altogether. Last Friday, a ninth-grade student journalist from The Pioneer came to me in distraught as her guidance counselors asked her to change her schedule for the following year. Her and other journalists were all looking forward to the Newspaper Class to build their experience, leadership, and resume, which segues into our second point of address. With all due respect, cutting the journalism electus will be an extremely poor choice. I understand that reinstating all three classes is not within your agenda. However, the Newspaper Class at minimum should be within the top priority of West Orange High School's curriculum. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Isabella Ford Valiantay, and I reside at five-Sime Avenue. I'm committed to Syracuse University, and I will be double-majoring in Journalism and Political Science. This is my second year being the co-editor-in-chief of The Pioneer, as well as in the Newspaper Class. Tonight, I would like to advocate for the future success of our students by keeping the Newspaper program. Without these journalism courses, students lose valuable opportunities to build strong resumes for college applications and to explore journalism as a potential career. These courses provide essential specialized skills, such as interviewing, investigative reporting, and editorial writing, skills that traditional English classes simply cannot offer. Journalism classes give students hands-on experiences in producing real-world content, amplifying student voices, and contributing meaningfully to the school community. As of now, the Newhouse School of Communications at Syracuse, which I will be attending, is the number-one school in the country for communications and journalism. The Pioneer has given me plenty of opportunities that have led me down this path, along with many other alumni from West Orange High School. One example includes our annual alumni panel, where students are offered advice and networking opportunities to connect with our school's alumni who are currently pursuing or actively working in their communication careers. All of the alumni of this program have gone to prestigious colleges and universities for journalism or communication, including Harvard, Yale, Northwestern, Boston University, NYU, Duke, Syracuse, Tulane, West Point, Fordham, and the University of Pittsburgh, and the list goes on. The journalism program at the high school, specifically our Newspaper classes, allows students to gain practical experiences and skills that directly prepare them for journalism or communication careers. Not only has the Newspaper Class created opportunities for me and allowed me to develop my love for journalism, but it has also become a safe space for me and many other students. In Newspaper Class, we don't just learn how to write, we learn how to find and use our voices. It's a place where expression, creativity, and critical thinking thrive, and where we support each other as both writers and individuals. You learn to express yourself through writing. It is also where I've built meaningful relationships, including a strong bond with my advisor, Ms. Dahl, who is not here tonight. And she has guided me and supported me throughout my growth as a writer and a leader. I want other students to have the same opportunities that myself and the leadership team were fortunate enough to experience. With all due respect, we believe that the Board of Education is treating the school like a business regarding the budget cuts. Under these specific circumstances, the Board of Education should invest in the academic interests of the students first, allowing them to excel. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Taylor Shimick, and I reside at eighty Mayfair Drive. Um, I just think it's unfortunate that we have to be here to talk about budget cuts at all. Um, but it's a great exercise in our freedom of speech. So I'm a senior and the managing editor of The Pioneer, and today I would like to advocate for the student voice. The resources you're considering cutting have allowed students to develop an irreplaceable set of skills. Through journalism, my fellow leadership team and I have been beyond fortunate to discover our voice and form educated opinions in addition to strengthening our mechanical skills as writers. The continuation of imparting these skills is necessary, not just for personal growth, but for the future of our democracy. Journalism equips students with the tools to understand and question the world around them, evoking transformative thought that inspires their decisions and actions to come. Um, that's why it's so important to convey to the impressionable students of West Orange High School that their voices matter. By removing the journalism program, you are essentially silencing the student body and revealing that the ability to express ourselves is not a priority to you. Considering the current political climate, it is more important than ever to ensure our voices are represented and our First Amendment right is protected. Your choices today will impact the future of tomorrow. Words are power, and we should be allowed to practice that individual power to speak freely, both within our classroom and beyond. In a world where AI is increasingly present, we must maintain the authentic human voice that comes with journalism. In the near future, the death of such authenticity will lead to fake news and the spread of information, as we've seen, proving detrimental to our society and even our rights as people and students. Um, so finally, I would like to propose a solution that maybe hopefully someone could consider. Um, we have, like they mentioned, that we have low-class enrollment. So combining the journalism, newspaper, and broadcast classes to a joint communications program for the following year would allow us to continue to learn such a valuable craft and transform our learning environment as well into a modern collaborative space. Um, this would keep the spirit of journalism alive while also addressing your concerns. The preservation of journalism in any form should be considered a top priority to your curriculum, and our needs should be considered. In doing so, you will have contributed to shaping the future of informed and responsible citizens. So today, we encourage you to consider the student voice and refrain from cutting the Newspaper program. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Violet Klonstein, and I reside at twenty-four Yale Terrace. If you are unfamiliar with The Pioneer, it is the online newspaper and student publication at West Orange High School. It is student-directed, written, and edited. I'm a junior this year and have been part of the Pioneer community since my freshman year. My sophomore year, last year, on paper was transformative for me. I covered multiple stories, including the controversy with the dress code, a walkout in support of Palestine but led by West Orange High School students, and the pervasiveness of vaping as it was seen last academic year. Each gave me a firsthand taste of what investigative journalism is like. I facilitated my own interviews, dug deep with hours of research and edits. And when pressed by administration or students for more information, I sat down again, looked critically at my process, and wrote a follow-up article. After each of these articles were published, I was shocked at how many people approached me to say that they had read my piece. Students, staff, administrators alike. I felt empowered like never before. It felt like my voice mattered, because it did. My friends looked to me in the weeks following articles, publications, for updates or clarifications on certain rules or protocol, and I got to tell them with confidence the answer. In a world where teens' news comes predominantly from short-form social media content, this feeling is incredibly important. The ability that Pioneer staff members have to report factual content in an accessible way for students is critical as, as it not only allows our staff members to offer their nuanced perspectives on current events and school happenings, but also fosters a level of student engagement and communication that is critical. An article I read last week was titled "Gen Z is Losing a Skill We've Had for Five Thousand Five Hundred Years." Forty percent are losing the ability to communicate. If students should take anything away from their time at West Orange High School, I think it should be that ability. And Newspaper Class can help. If we are to break this, break past this concerning trend of communication skill depletion, we have to at least attempt to preserve the hands-on opportunities currently available at West Orange High School. They're actively combating this. They're actively combating this. Newspaper students are taught the value of the interview, how it can tell you more than any number ever will, and with three years on the program, I am easily able to interview adults, peers, administrators, and community members with confidence and an excitement to understand. Many argue that journalism in itself is a dying art form, even a dying career path. As social media takes over the news outlets, it's certainly true that the industry is changing. Something that is equally true, however, is that humanity will never become obsolete. People's skills will forever be a necessity. The ability to push boundaries, advocate for oneself, think critically while leaving room for empathy, and human connection will never become redundant. As I explained, the Pioneer does exist outside of newspaper class as a club, but I can also promise that students will not give up on the paper, but the elimination of newspaper class as an elective will not allow the newspaper to function at the capacity it currently exists. Cutting the journalism program is stealing opportunities and stealing student voices. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Bonnie Goodman. I live on Walker Road, and I am a paraprofessional at Washington Elementary School. Before I get on with my comments, I just want to say that the journalism students who have just been up here have spoken eloquently about the need to continue a voice to be heard. On the way home from school this afternoon, I heard on the news that the federal government has shut funding for Radio Free Europe. There are no more voices to be heard. So it is vitally important that journalism, getting your, the message out there and giving a voice, so people can read, understand, and then make a educated decision as to their future be continued. So please, before you cut journalism, communication, think about "No More Radio Free Europe." But I am a lifelong resident of West Orange. My husband went through the school system, as well as my children. When I go to visit my mother-in-law, who is 100 years old and living on Stanford Court, she will often say to me, "Bonnie, West Orange is a very good place to raise children, isn't it?" And I always said, "Bee, yes, yes, it is." But I have to say, with everything that's going on now, I don't think I can say that anymore. I've been very involved in town. I am one of the founding members of PASS, which was the Association that, for parents advocating for special services in education. We were responsible, Laura Lab is in the audience tonight, as well as Ron Charles and other community members, for raising public awareness for the challenges of children with learning disabilities. And PASS was a huge factor in establishing the amazing special education program we have here in District Today. And I would hate to see the opportunities for those children fade away. I am a mother of a child with autism, and because of the support Josh received in District, he graduated from New Jersey City University and is working full-time, confident in his abilities, and that he got as he went through the school district. I'm a past president of the West Orange Council of PTAs, and the council worked with the school members, with the town council, with the individual PTAs to promote West Orange as a great place to educate and raise your children. So now I stand before you, still as a West Orange resident and a paraprofessional...
Ms. Goodman, could you please wrap it up?
Okay, sure. So why would you neglect our children, our country's greatest natural resource, to be punished for mismanagement? The children in our district are already at a socioeconomic disadvantage...
A little quicker with the last sentence, perhaps.
...and defunding the schools you are committing to cultivating an uneducated generation that depresses local economies and contributes to the systematic segregation of vulnerable communities.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman.
Hi, my name is Larry Weintraub. I live at 76 Cobain Terrace. And unlike everybody else who's spoken here, I didn't grow up here. I didn't know anything about this area. And when we moved here, we didn't move here for the schools, my two children were in private school, but we happily paid our taxes for the schools, because the schools are important, and education is important, and making sure that public education is adequately funded is important for all taxpayers and for all members of the community. But when we looked at middle school options for our oldest son, we realized that West Orange schools were, in fact, the very best option. And he started at Edison, needing a number of special education resources. And through the incredibly hard work of his teachers, many of whom I have seen in the room here today, he has made enormous progress. And that comes not just from the special education resources that he received, but also from the small class sizes, from the dedication of all of his teachers, not just the ones with special education training, who all found his gifts and his talents and were able to further his learning. And that comes from a district that is dedicated to funding everything that is needed for education to thrive. And every step we have made through the school system, we have been amazed and thrilled with the options that are available and with the dedication of his teachers and the relationships that we have built. And I cannot adequately express how amazing that has been. And that comes from a place that is dedicated to funding public education at the highest levels that we can. And as a taxpayer, and I still have one son who's in private school, I happily pay my taxes, and I happily request that they be increased to the maximum amount so that we can fund the system the way it needs to be funded. And we can have the teachers that have made the educational experience here the very best that one could imagine. And so I just want to say that you shouldn't be afraid of the taxpayers. We can be mobilized to fund this. We want this. This is a place where this is of value. Education is of value here, and we fund it. So mobilize us. I don't have any ideas to make money up here. I'm sorry about that, but we are here to make this happen and grateful for what the West Orange education system and the teachers have provided. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, administrators, educators, and community members. My name is Anna Somonamu. I reside in Cherry Street. And I'm actually here tonight as, for the first time in my life, a union representative for paraprofessionals, as well as an advocate for public education and a proud product of this school district. West Orange Public Schools shaped my life and my family's futures. As a daughter of immigrant parents, education was our pathway to the American dream. This district didn't just educate me, it empowered me. The teachers, the counselors, and staff here believed in me, and because of them, I am now an educator, giving back to the very system that uplifted me and advocating for the students who are in need of a voice. But what happens when those same educators and resources are taken away? These budget cuts will hurt our students and our schools. And as a former teacher of mine, Ms. Deb Cohen said, "Larger class sizes mean less individual attention. Fewer mental health resources leave students without support. Staff reductions take away the very people who will actually make a difference in the students' lives." Now, I worry about my students and their chances of having at least a speck of an opportunity that I've had. But if I don't have hope in the ethical and statistical data from the very people who are supposed to look out for us, how am I to be that beacon of hope for them? Again, this district has always been a place of opportunity, diversity, and academic excellence. But with this current situation, that legacy is now at risk. We must do everything possible to explore alternative funding solutions before making cuts that will have long-term consequences. And I have my degree in political science and economics, so I'm not going to be here to school you, but if I can be of any assistance, I'm here. I've always said, "I'm here," but nobody's heard. Our students deserve better. Our educators deserve better. Public education is the foundation of our community, and it must remain strong. Muchas gracias.
Hello. So, I'm on 643 Mount Pleasant Avenue. Hi, everybody. There's about 10 times as many people here as the last time I attended, and I had no idea about the budget issues. That's because I have three young children, including a baby, and they eat me alive. I don't get out much, so I'm surprised. I came here with a silly graphic about a footpath, in essence, which is not on the agenda, so I'm not going to defer that. But hearing all this and listening to all these great people made me realize that something happened as part of this that could be relevant. And my immediate predecessor up here, an earlier gentleman, mentioned, like, "How can we help?" What happened here was essentially, there's this preschool building coming up apparently over at Mount Pleasant Elementary, and it's like, "Yay, I have two kids that might go there." I am thrilled. I am a yimby person rather than nimby and all that. But when Principal Lawrence did this great presentation, something weird happened. He had concerns, of course, about traffic and, you know, security and parking and so on, and it didn't seem like there were any, like, strong solutions for it. And the room erupted with all these ideas, and that's saying something, because there were like 10 people in the room. And Principal Lawrence, each time said, "That's a great idea. You should have been in the meeting with the architects. I'll take all this to the next one." And that was both encouraging and a little bit, huh? I mean, this is partly about parking, and my understanding is that maybe like BMLC is moving over there or something? And I'm thinking about how much staff is over there for 60-plus children, and like, there's no parking, it's full. So the thing we thought about was, why don't we just make a little footpath over to like O'Connor, there's parking over there? And then, well, this paving couldn't do it because wetness and so on, like, okay. So I thought afterwards, well, why don't we just not pave it? Can we just have, like, a few parents show up with a few hundred dollars of lumber and just build a little bridge over the little, like, drainage ditch over there, and then you can walk? And I thought of that after, so I thought I'd bring it here, because it didn't seem like Principal Lawrence had that much of a hand in, like, affecting the plans and so on. Like, okay, well, let's go ask over here. And that's what I came to do, but if that many suggestions come up in a room of 10 people, how many do we have here? Like, how do we help? Where do I sign up? Can we help, like, financially? Can a bunch of us show up with leaf blowers and just, like, help out? So that's really it. How can I help? Where can I leave my business card? What can we do together? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Max Grossman. I live on Allen Street in West Orange. I'm a lifelong resident of West Orange. I graduated from all the West Orange schools. And when I was looking for somewhere to settle, there was no other option besides West Orange for me to move to and start my own family. I'm glad it seems like you guys are planning to raise the budget to cap. And as a resident that is facing all the same inflation issues as the rest of us, I fully support that, and money is certainly tight. We need to make sure that we maintain our programs, especially our electives in school. I heard journalism might be on the chopping block. This is where students, including me, find their passion in life. Mr. Moore was my dean and can tell you how many classes I cut to go to woodshop. And it obviously worked out, because I ended up back here, teaching woodshop and sharing that passion with my students. I got hooked on that career here, and love that my students can also get hooked on woodshop and plumbing and electrical and all the other electives, there's too many to count, in this school, and go on to successful careers in both the private industry and union. The Plumbing and Electrical and Carpentry Union come to this school and hire kids, students, right out of here in June every year. So, yeah. Many of these trades are needed to maintain the aging buildings that were mentioned in this district, so let's please make sure that we keep that in the budget to make sure there's a safe and reliable place for our students to learn, without leaky roofs or heat that doesn't work. And let's make sure that we're training our students to do those jobs that can't be exported and can't be replaced by AI. Let's be smart about making cuts. Not every student is college-bound, which is where those elective classes come in. And that's really what makes West Orange such a great and amazing school, that people can discover these things that they wouldn't have discovered elsewhere. That's all I got. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Frye, 27 Lessing Road. My kids are at St. Cloud. I came to say that I realize that these cuts may be necessary in the end. I fully appreciate that. I think that everybody is working hard to do what's best for the district. However, it's really hard for me to feel satisfied, as a parent and member of the public, that everything that can be done is being done after such a frankly really short presentation and no questions from the board members in public. The goal of these meetings is not to end them as quickly as possible. We have open public meeting requirements for a reason, and that's so that we can have substantive discussions in public. And parents, voters, taxpayers in this town deserve to hear from their board members about what are the questions that you're asking of the administration, and then what are their answers? The public speaks is sort of a one-way thing, so we don't get all our questions answered at the end of it. That's why we rely on the board to have a discussion in front of us, so we know that the questions that we want to hear asked are being asked, and that we know what positions you guys are taking. It's not for your own personal satisfaction, okay? You have a public role here. And so, and in addition to that, this is a historic cut. You know, if we're going to be at the next meeting and then there's going to be the presentation of the specific cuts then, that's not satisfactory to me. There should be town hall meetings with parents, with different schools. You guys should be meeting with us, going and hearing feedback from parents. I personally am fine with increasing the tax. That's okay. It means it's going to be a big strain on us. My mother lives in town, too. It's not ideal, but I'm okay with it. But if you want to know how parents feel about it, talk to them. Like, have meetings with us. Go to the schools. You guys are like accountants and taxies, and you should be working overtime, meeting with every single person you can, hearing feedback, getting maybe some good ideas about what you can do. As, for example, I urge you guys to watch, last week, our neighbor, South Orange Maplewood, had their budget meeting, and they had a $6 million deficit they were trying to close. They were able to close that with no layoffs, no reduction in staff, by just going line by line through the budget, going building to building, talking to staff, to principals about, like, okay, are we really using this contract? Can we restructure this vendor? That, all these small things added up to that much savings. And I'm not saying that can happen here, maybe we're much more efficient than South Orange Maplewood is to begin with, and we don't have those savings, but like, I want to know that that was done, before anybody gets laid off, before we lose any of our valuable staff members. We need to know that every single thing that can be done was done. So please, we're not your enemies. Even the leaf blower thing, for example, I mean, if that had, I didn't know that that happened. If that had been brought up by any board member at a meeting, I would have gone to the town hall meeting, I would have written them a letter and said how I felt about it. I totally agree with you guys, but like, we're, like, engage us. We're here, we're not your enemies, you don't have to do things in private. You know, use the public. We're here, we're all working together as a community to do our best. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Uh, I'm Katie Copel from thirty Colony Drive East. Um, I'm here to beat a dead horse. Um, so I'm a West Orange resident. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a proud parent of a second grader at Hazel. I was here last board meeting. I have a rising kindergartner, so I'll be in this district, if it's a good district, for the next thirteen years. I understand that this is an unprecedented challenge that you're facing. A significant state funding cut means that you have hard choices and it threatens the foundation of our schools, our educators and our children. I think Superintendent Moore and the many passionate voices in the room have told us all what's at stake, and so I want to make the same impassioned plea that many of the other people that came here tonight, um, have done, including the last speaker, which is, how can we help? And how can we work together to minimize the impact of these cuts? Families, educators, community members are ready to be part of the solution, but we need the transparency to be able to collaborate with you and make that possible. My question is, how can we help? What advocacy efforts can we take on to close the gaps between the support that the teachers and students need? We're asking for a clear plan. I'm asking for a clear plan on how to engage the community in meaningful ways that protects what matters to us, which is our children's education. Strong schools make West Orange an attractive place to live. Their decline will have a lasting consequence for all of us. I'm urging you to do everything in your power to increase the budget, to think outside the box and to partner with us to find sustainable solutions. Because the children come first. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Laura Lab. I reside twelve Barrack Way, Roseland. I lived in West Orange for thirty-one years. I served on the Board of Education from two thousand eight to two thousand seventeen. I received my certification as a master board member from New Jersey School Board Association. I was president of P A S from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand eight, president of the Council of P T A from two thousand two to two thousand five during the referendum for the new Middle School of Liberty, which is now twenty years old. And believe it or not, I attended board meetings religiously for twenty-one years. While I was still on the board, I provided professional development at New Jersey School Board Association. And after I left the board, I was contracted to be hired as a consultant to write policy manuals. The only time I've ever spoken to the board since I left eight years ago was when the former superintendent, Dr. Cascone, had recommended that budget cuts be presented to cut courtesy and hazardous busing. So it really takes a lot to get me out. Um, but I was contacted by friends tonight with their concern about the preliminary budget. Since many of you are either in your freshman term or your sophomore term, I'd like to give you a historical background of budgets. When I left the budget, when I left the school board in two thousand seventeen, our budget was a hundred and forty-four million dollars. It is now up to two hundred and twenty-one million, which is an increase of seventy-seven million in eight years. That's a nine point six annual increase. Our state aid at the time was eight point five million. You are now four times that amount. Federal aid, which is somewhat minuscule compared to the rest of the budget, it has increased nearly double since I left. And the cost per pupil at that time was eighteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight, and as of this current year is at twenty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-three. I appreciate more than most people the difficulty in balancing and crafting a budget, being acutely aware of contractual obligations, federal and state mandates, infrastructure maintenance, programming, professional development, extracurriculars, transportation, health insurance, while still setting priorities for the district. I'm sure the West Orange Board of Education has not become the latest outpost for an office of Doge, but the idea of cutting this amount of employees will not satisfy your budget deficits and will be counterproductive. I'd like to offer to you alternatives to cutting staff, taking a hard look at your energy costs, professional development, curriculum purchases, computers and capital projects. I've been told that the expansion of the preschool program would not net or impact the budget anyway. I'm not sure if that's accurate or not, but I saw you have five hundred and seventy-five preschoolers now. And there is construction at Mount Pleasant to lay the groundwork for, I think, modular buildings or something. So I'm hoping that still that increase of population does not impact the budget because that's what it was sold as. I know I'm out of time and I'm almost done. The cost of consultants to provide contractually required professional development can be greatly reduced, if not eliminated, by doing turnkey professional development from your senior staff or stipends, far less than the cost of outside consultants.
Slap, please wrap it up.
I will wrap it up. The last important thing is when I was on the board, I voted no against a contract for ESIP with Honeywell for eleven million dollars. There was guaranteed savings there, so I don't know if you've done an audit since, but they were required to provide eight hundred thousand dollars annually in energy and operational savings and a two point eight million dollar positive cash flow over the length of the program. I strongly urge you to do an accounting of that.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jill, um, Jill Harris. I'm from nine Ardmore Road. Um, I was not planning on standing up. I've never been to a Board of Ed meeting. Um, and the reason I think a lot of people showed up is because as long as things are going well, we're like, okay, great. But when we see some concerns, that's, I think, when we come out. So, uh, I have lived here for twelve years now. I've been a taxpayer for twelve years, and I moved here knowing that at some point I'd likely have a child who was going to enter, um, you know, this excellent school system that I had heard so much about and one of the main reasons I moved here. Um, and now I have, I'm proud mom of a kindergartner at Gregory. Um, and I'm just starting this journey, so I'm new to all of this. Um, but I'm in it for the long haul, and I'm in awe of the amazing people that I've met at this school and as part of the West Orange educational community. When our taxes increased, uh, which they did a lot, um, you know, it was a comfort. It was probably the only comfort, knowing that a significant portion of the money that we're paying would go towards my daughter's education and the education of all the other children in this town, because they're the most important thing, right? Um, and I voted for you guys, right? Like, we're all, we vote and we pay our taxes and things, and so, you know, we, I'm gonna guess this turnout is not typical for a Board of Education meeting. That should really tell you something. We hire you guys, we vote for you, um, to solve these really important issues, and we need your help right now because clearly this type of, these type of cuts is not, that's not what we want. That's not what our parents want. That's not what our teachers want. That's not what our community wants, and that's why we turned out en masse tonight to demonstrate that to you. And I've heard that parent voices, for some reason, are really important, so that's the only reason I stood up, because I want you guys to know that we care as parents and we adore our teachers, the ones that are with our littles all day long, you know, teaching them, uh, day in and day out, and, and really protecting them, keeping them safe all day. So, there are, uh, what I'm gonna ask you guys is, you know, there are a lot of really incredibly smart people and dedicated people, not just in this room, but people who couldn't make it to tonight's meeting. Tap into those resources. I've heard tons of excellent ideas just sitting in this audience tonight that you guys could take advantage of. You know, find these people and, and talk to them, the people who have boots on the ground every day, who know where cuts are okay and where cuts maybe shouldn't be made. Talk to them, you know, figure it out from there. Um, so I'm gonna stop with that, um, but I just wanted to, to put my voice out there and, and be in support of our teachers. So, thank you.
Hello, uh, hope you're all doing good. Uh, my name is Lucas Andrade. I live at five thirty-nine Eagle Rock Avenue. I'm a senior here. I love being here. I put my heart on the line for this, for this school. I play four-year soccer. I love it here. But I also love seeing, seeing all my peers learn what they love to do. Because we're all about to leave. We're all about to have our own lives, and they all found what they want to do through these electives that y'all trying to cut. Like the broadcasting program. I wasn't in it as long as my friend, but my best friend, I've never seen him put so much passion into something, and I love seeing that. I just want to see my friends strive. I don't want to see you guys take away what other students, just like my friends, can make and find their love. Because even at the end of the day, it's all about the students. Like the first guy said, I loved his speech. I love everyone's speeches today. Just like the first guy said, can't take it away from the kids. You gotta do this for the kids. It's all for us. We got kids coming here from the school talking, because it shows the passion. It shows that they love their school. And I know everyone here loves their school, so let's do it for the kids. Let's do it for the school. That's all I got.
Hi, everyone. My name is, uh, Damari Ferguson. I live at eight nine seven Pleasant Valley Way. Um, uh, yeah, I'm a, a mock trial member of our, not championship, but in the finals mock trial team. And the reason I'm actually in that team is because of a lot of our educators that are here. A lot of the educators here are the reason, yeah, Ms. Smith, I see you in the background. You're very nice. Mr. Evans, I see you too. You can stand up. But yeah, a lot of the educators here are the reason that I'm in this mock trial team. I wouldn't have continued if it wasn't for students and educators alike. And the fact that these educators have to be scared of getting their contracts or votes. Like, when I was here on Friday, the rumors of these budget cuts were terrible, and all, a lot of my teachers and students alike, like journalists, my friends in journalism, they were very scared of when they were told that all these journalism classes were getting cut. It's not right. We have to do something about these cuts, because a lot, we all, I, there's so many people here tonight, and I know we all have ideas that what we can do and how we have to do it, but it doesn't really matter. At the end of the day, something needs to be done. And if not just for me, my, my little brother, he's five years old, he's in special education classes, and my little brother will be affected by the largening of these classrooms if individuality is not, excuse me, I'm very, I have a cold, sorry. If individuality is not, uh, preserved, I guess you could say, individuality is not preserved in our classrooms. And same thing, I see these in my own classrooms. Teachers not being able to provide individuality and oh my god, individuality and like resources for students that clearly need them because of these cuts. So I know that there's not much that, there's probably not much that we can really do at this point that, uh, as a school standpoint, but like, if anything, we have so many people here tonight. It's like, uh, like, the guy that mentioned that we need to do something was sitting right behind me, so, I mean, there's that. Um, but yeah, if we, like, we need to have, like, some sort of meeting, like, with everyone from our town to get, like, ideas going, because any ideas are better than no ideas at all, and I'm actually out of time, but thank you so much.
Matt Dragon, thirteen Sheridan Avenue. On the side of St. Cloud Elementary School carved in stone, it says, "The problems of the future must be solved by the children of today." Those words have always struck me. They struck me before I had a child. They strike me, struck me when my daughter attended St. Cloud, and they strike me now that my daughter's at Roosevelt. They will continue to strike me when my daughter has graduated from the district, and I continue to pay my tax bill with a smile. Because I'm not paying for my kid. I'm paying for our kids. Our kids that the teachers and staff adopt as their own every school day. But for the children, your children, our children, my child, to solve our future problems, we must support them today. We cannot leave our kids and our future without the ability to solve those problems. Our schools are, in their purest and most distilled form, an investment in our shared future. It is an investment now in our future teachers, staff and board members, our future parents, our future taxpayers, our future well-educated populace. If we shortchange our students, our kids today, how do we make up for that later? So I'd ask you to fight for every penny we can find elsewhere, and I and others tonight offer to help. But you also must vote to support raising as much of the remainder as you can from us residents. Our future holds big problems. We must do everything we can and invest in every way we can to prepare our kids to solve them. Thank you.
Moore has to run to the bathroom. If you'd, if you'd like to speak to us, you can. If you'd like to wait and reserve your time. Okay.
I, I could speak to you now, and then when he comes back, I could say it all over again.
One, one of the
For emphasis. Anybody know a good joke?
Knock, knock. Interrupting cow. Moo! The big hit with the high schooler is not gonna lie.
Lauren, is this on? Oh, okay. All right, we're, we're gonna take a five-minute recess and then come back. So, thank you. Thanks. If we could find our way back to our seats, we'll be starting in about sixty seconds. Thank you for bearing with us. Robert, thank you.
Yeah, I think I better say something. Hello, everyone. We're gonna return back to the meeting, but I think it's only right that I thank you for allowing me to pause.
And as the teacher, I appreciate you asking permission first.
I did ask permission. I appreciate the attempted jokes to keep everyone entertained. I appreciate it. But thank you for your patience.
All right, we will be back in session. Continue public comment. He'll, he'll join us in a few minutes.
Hi, my name is Patty Richardson. I am an eighth grade ELA teacher at Liberty Middle School. I was debating whether or not I was going to speak tonight, but after seeing the presentation, there was something that really stood out in my mind. And the biggest takeaway from the presentation is that we are just a number. There wasn't a specific amount of, um, we don't know how many teachers are going to be let go. We don't know how many custodians are going to be let go. We don't know how many coaches are going to be let go. We have no idea. I have been in this district between my father and myself. My father was an, a teacher at Roosevelt Middle School for thirty-four and a half years. I've been in this district, this is my twenty-fifth year. We have together been part of this district for almost sixty years. So when I tell you I'm invested in West Orange, I am very invested in West Orange. It is a true testament to how eloquently the students who came up and spoke to the quality of education that they are getting by the staff in this district. The thought of any teacher being let go is mind-boggling to me. As an ELA teacher, I am in a tested subject area. That hasn't been brought up tonight. We're concerned about test scores. That's all we hear. What am I supposed to do with a class of thirty eighth-grade students? Have you been in a room with thirty eighth graders? It's no joke. And the bathroom situation is a very real deal. No joke. But we are not a number. And I have to tell you, our job, I have stood up here before and I will say it again, this job, out of any job on this earth, is the most demanding. And our morale is atrocious. Your staff comes to work every day. They have no idea whether or not their job is on the line. But yet, here we are to serve the children, to love them, to nurture them, to make them better. We deserve better. I hope you make the right decision and you don't let people go who should not be let go. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kristen Darianzo. I'm a biology special education teacher here at West Orange High School. This is my fifth year in West Orange. I have been in education for fourteen years. I taught nine years at Parsippany High School, and I've seen a lot of different students. I've worked with a lot of different teachers. As a special education teacher, I am usually in a classroom with another general education teacher. We call it ICR here. We called it co-teaching in Parsippany. I have co-taught with many people. I have seen many students with disabilities. I made the decision after nine years of teaching in Parsippany. I was vested. I was tenured. I'd been there my entire teaching career, started at twenty-two years old. And I was tired of the same nonsense, not feeling heard, not feeling appreciated, watching our special ed program not get the attention it deserved. And so I made the very scary, bold, brave choice to quit my job in June of 2020, at the height of a global pandemic. I interviewed virtually. I interviewed with Mr. Moore while he was out putting signs on seniors' front lawns for graduation. I didn't set foot in this building until what, April? And everyone, surprisingly, was shorter than I thought they were gonna be. I was terrified, but I tell my students, I teach a lot of special ed students, all the levels, LLD, POR, ICR. I tell them that in life, you're faced with choices, some more difficult than others. And sometimes you have to take risks. I took a risk and I was terrified. And I could not be happier with the decision that I made. I am here for five years. I have loved every single one of them, and I hope to be here for many more years to come. But I have to tell you, what's happening right now is not looking good for me, okay? We've talked a lot about special ed here. Yes, it is the law that special ed students get the services that they deserve. What about the other students? What happens when we have to make those difficult decisions? And at the end of the day, you're willing to get rid of teachers, the teachers who serve all of those students, that make this district great. I don't want to leave West Orange, but I know that if I have to do what's best for me, what's best for my interest, and I need to go somewhere where I feel more appreciated, then I will do that. I've already proven that I will do it, and I will do it again. Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm Samira Caillou. My address is nine Gisley Street. Um, I'm actually like really terrified right now. My hands are shaking like, like crazy. Thank you. Um, I just remember sitting in my, in my history class today. And, um, I just remember the entire class, we were talking about the budget cuts. I remember a student who went to her council because she had to get her class changed. And all I just see is a big red circle and an X. And I just remember looking at my classmates right next to me, and they were, they were sad. And I'm like, wow. And like, even though these won't affect me, it's clear that you guys made these decisions, like you didn't think of the students in mind. No offense, you really didn't think of the students in mind. Um, I feel like this could have been a problem that could have been more open. I'm pretty sure some people are finding out today that you need to make all these necessary cuts. Um, I'm sorry, I wrote a script in like three minutes. Just, I just wanna, I just wanted you guys to answer this question for me. Did you guys think of the effects? Do you guys think of the consequences? Did you really think with, with us in mind? Yes, these, these classes, they may not have many people that, that, you know, enroll, but there are still people who, who want to be passionate and want to pursue their dreams. And by just cutting them off, you're just making it, you're just like shutting down their dreams like that. And I didn't really like that. Um, I also do know that this may, this whole deficit thing may have been a problem last year. And that people, nobody talked about that either. And I'm just wondering, why didn't we talk about this last year? Why didn't we take action last year? Now we have to make all these necessary budget cuts because you didn't bring it up with any, anyone here last year. You didn't talk about anything in town hall meetings last year. And, um, yeah, just think of us in mind. That's all I have to say.
David Fitzgerald, Principal Liberty Middle School. That student just spoke, and I had to convince her to share her voice. I did. And I said, "Just say what you need to say, however you need to say." There are some people who are wondering what I'm gonna say tonight, and it's not that I'm gonna say anything bad. You guys have the worst job ever. I'll be honest with you. Because at the end of the day, you have to determine what cuts have to be made. I've offered those cuts. Tanya Flowers. You were a teacher for me at one point in time. I was sad with both Vera and Ivker and said, "This is what we need to do." Hayden, we, I've seen you, seen you at your best and your worst. And at the end of the day, when we look at what's going to happen in this district, we have to make sure that we are doing what's best for the students. You can call me a lot of things. A lot of people have called me a lot of things in this room. But at the end of the day, what I want to make sure is that we're doing what's best for our students moving forward. And that's not an easy decision, and I want you to understand that. Because everybody has walked up to this mic and has said, "This is what we should do. This is how we should do." And at the end of the day, it's not an easy decision to make. It's not. It's not. Like I look at an Anton Carrera list. Yes, Anton, how you doing? It's not an easy decision. Bocheese, I got you. We're not. There are so many, I've been here for twenty years, twenty years, two decades. These are not just individuals. These are people that I know. I know their life. I know what they've gone through to get here. And when you make these decisions, please make these decisions understanding that they have lives. Ms. Venziano, I know you. Mendez, I know. I know Salamino. I know the decisions that you have to make that are not easy. They're not easy decisions to make. But if they're necessary decisions, then this is where I come back to the board and say, "You have to make the decisions that are necessary in order to move this district forward." And I don't know what those decisions are. All I can say is make the decisions that are in the best interest of this district and the best interest of the students as you move forward. So I know you guys are worried about what I was gonna say. That's what I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Last call for, uh, public comment? Okay. Um, so thank you for all that. Uh, not gonna address everything individually, but just a few points, uh, that we would like to, uh, address. Um, one, there was a, a comment about leaf blowers, and if we had said something in an earlier meeting, perhaps people would have gone to the town council. I just wanna, uh, set the record straight that we did not know this was happening. Uh, there was an ordinance passed about two years ago. The last time I talked to a council member about that ordinance, it was our understanding we would not be subject to it, and so it wasn't going to apply to us. Um, Mr. Ivker is on the, uh, town liaison committee, and he meets with council regularly to discuss issues. It was not brought up to him until all of a sudden, between our last meeting and this meeting, I believe, is when it came up for first reading at the council. Mr. Ivker did attend that council meeting to speak to it. Both of us did reach out to council members to discuss it. Uh, so if we had known about it six months ago, we probably would have said something here as well. So just mention that. Uh, on the topic of pre-K, uh, there is a small expenditure to our budget, a local, uh, contribution to the pre-K program, so it is not free, so to speak. Uh, but that expenditure is small, and it is an incredible benefit to this district, uh, that comes to the tune of about seven or eight million dollars in last year's budget. Is that correct? Uh, and will increase this year as we enroll more students. So if we have to pay a tiny percentage of that, uh, I am absolutely fine with that. Uh, but that is not what's driving this budget deficit. So if anyone is saying anything out there that pre-K is the cause of this, that is an absolute lie and untruth. Uh, pre-K is a benefit to this district that is well worth whatever small contribution we have to make on a local scale. Um, as to the, the journalism program, talked to, to Mr. Moore. Uh, we have not reviewed any specific cuts. Uh, we do know there are discussions going on about things to recommend for cuts, uh, so, so we have not made any specific decisions to eliminate journalism, especially not to eliminate every journalism class. We value the arts, as we value everything that this district does and all the things that we do for our students. Um, can't guarantee that there will be no cut to journalism at all, but I also can't guarantee that there will be no cut to any in particular program or sport or, you know, curricular area or anything. The fact of the matter is that we have a budget deficit. As we have spoken to Mr. Moore and Ms. Flowers, we have instructed them to spread that out as well as they can with minimal impact on classroom activities. But when you're talking about millions of dollars, there, there are not millions of dollars out there to find by accident, right? If we were, when they costed out the zero percent budget, if we cut all of the sports performing arts, that doesn't cover the, the deficit. I, I would not recommend cutting all of those, but I say that just to put it in perspective, right? Classroom instruction, the majority of our budget is people. People, the, the salaries and benefits that go along with everything that we do as a school building. And so if you're trimming, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars, you can find that. You can do that somewhere else. You know, if you go to central office, there's a little bit there, but there's not eight million there. It's not eight million in sports, right? There, there is no magical world where we can say, "Save this, whatever this is that means something to you, and cut something else." So, so to Mr. Fitzgerald's point, we do have some difficult decisions, but we do not take them lightly. Um, as, as someone said, it's, it's, it's a cut when you're not on the other end of that, but I've been on the other end of that. I started my job as a teacher in East Orange, and the year that I was supposed to get tenure, I was told that I was gonna be cut, and I had to deal with that. I was lucky enough to be called back, but my, you know, some of my colleagues were not. So I don't take it lightly, the idea that we may have to riff someone who's on the eve of tenure. And when I taught AP Government, I had low enrollment. I had some great students who loved that class. One year they came and said, "Well, the budget doesn't allow us to have a class with ten students." So we had to cut that, and I had to tell the students who had already enrolled that, "Sorry, we're not gonna do that next year." So I know what it means when a cut impacts a staff member, a student. So I know what it means when a cut impacts a staff member, a student. You know, it's real to me. And in talking to the board, I know it's real to them. And in talking to, to Mr. Moore and Ms. Flowers, it's real to them as well. Uh, so I will just leave you with that, that we do not take this lightly and we will make the best decision that we can. And if those decisions end up being a little difficult, so. Mr. Moore, I don't know if you want to say anything.
Uh, thank you, President Rock. I think you said it best. Um, we didn't review any particular, uh, courses or classes. What I think, uh, that you experienced, whether it's student or teachers, is probably the enrollment and, um, looking at what low enrollment looks like and what it will be. And maybe there are solutions. I heard students here with some solutions that I would definitely offer up to principals. And I do, I have to say, I thought the comment about the importance of journalism and what AI looks like in our world today. And also Bonnie Goodman brings up, um, where our freedom of speech is being silenced in other areas. No, we do understand and recognize that. And by no means are we trying to take that lightly or not allow our students an opportunity to be able to advocate for themselves or communicate. I do think that, uh, with respect to the board and working with the board, um, this being my second budget, working with them, it isn't easy. This is unprecedented. We haven't been down this road before. Um, do we want to, um, cut jobs? Do we take that lightly? Do we want to do it? No, not at all. No one wants to do it. Um, but we do have a very real budget deficit. Um, that's not, um, there's no, this is transparent because there is no hiding that. It is, we did have a pro, a budget deficit last year. We did everything to maintain what we had. We used the bank cap. I, uh, searched high and low and I think, uh, Mr. Stevenson, those guys knew that, um, I wouldn't, I would work tirelessly to make sure every position was somewhere in the budget. We will still look at it and still work the same, same way and work tirelessly to resolve that. I assure you that. But I'm not sure that, um, we can make promises that this wouldn't be unprecedented anyway, um, even with, uh, the efforts or so forth. But what I will say is, you know, I, I, Josh and I spoke, Josh Goldfarb, President of, um, W O E A. Uh, we spoke and, you know, I, I'm wanting to and willing to take in any suggestions that our teachers may have that may want to fill things out. It would be great if, uh, like Joshua's going to collect it, but we put it on paper so that we could really review it. Not saying that everything would be used, but we could sure use suggestions and help. Uh, we are not turning away from that at all. Um, so know that we will, uh, take that in and look at it. Um, parents, we're willing to take your emails if you, uh, have a, uh, comment or a, an idea, or if you're new something from another district, we'll investigate it. We'll take a look at it. We're not in the business of trying to get rid of our teachers. We love them. They're terrific. I can tell you, I'm here 28 years. I know all, all these teachers and I'm going to tell you they're quality people, quality people. My children attend this district and I can say, I am grateful to the teachers of this district because I think my children have had great experiences. I still have two within the district now. So I feel the same way parents do. No one wants to be here. Uh, and, and, uh, definitely I don't want to be the messenger of bad news. Trust me. I don't like that. I'd rather smile and be cool with everyone. But we're at a point where we need to be just a little real. And we need to really understand where we're at as a town, community and a school system. Um, we'll work tirelessly on it. I'm drinking a lot of coffee. Had to go to the bathroom because of it. Um, but I'm up all night because it bothers me that we're here, but we are working on it. And I assure you, we'll continue to do so. But we're also open to any suggestions that you may have. Thank you guys.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. And now we will move on to our resolutions on the agenda. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the personnel items, A1 through A6?
Motion.
Sorry, was there a motion?
Yes, there was.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Vera. Want to congratulate the following retirees. Nancy Feldman, a school nurse at Mount Pleasant Elementary for her 32 years of service. Cynthia Lombardi, a third grade teacher at Hazel Elementary for her 21 years of service. Nancy Festa, a paraprofessional at West Orange High School for her 20 years of service. Colleen Flynn, a paraprofessional at West Orange High School for her 21 years of service. Claudia Lujin, a night shift custodian in West Orange High School for his 20 years of service. Isabel Olivie Balabona, a part-time bus driver in transportation for her 14 years of service. Jane Rifa, an administrative assistant at West Orange High School for her 25.5 years of service. And Catherine Winston, N H R specialist at Central Office for her 25 years of service. Thank you all for your services to the West Orange students and our school community. Best wishes to you on behalf of the Board of Education. And as Mr. Terry Trigg Scales would say, if she were still here, welcome to the club where every day is Saturday. Um, is there any other discussion on personnel? All right, hearing done. Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson? Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ivker?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next, may I have a motion to approve the curriculum and instruction items, B1 through B4?
Motion.
Thank you. Is it Mr. Stevenson? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ivker. Any discussion? Hearing done. Uh, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ivker?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next, may I have a pro, motion to approve the finance items, C, special services items, A1 through 5, and business office items, B1 through 10?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ivker. Uh, is there any discussion? This would include the vote on the budget, preliminary budget, no?
Say it again.
This would include the vote on the preliminary budget. So I don't know if anybody wants to.
Uh, yeah, I'll make a comment. Um, I think there were a lot of comments tonight. Um, I want to just offer a little bit of perspective. Just my opinion is, sitting up here as an elected board member, this is now, I believe, the fourth or fifth budget that I've had to vote on. And every year, it seems pretty perfunctory. We tax the people of West Orange to the max, 2% every year. Goes without saying. Uh, this year, given as what's been said before, we went through a reassessment by the county. Majority of the township's taxes went up, which means that assessed values go up. And our 2% then has a greater impact on the taxpayers of the community. Uh, the board responsibly looked at all of the options available to it, uh, from a range of zero to the max tax levy, including, uh, $465,000 in bank cap. Uh, that's the responsible thing to do, to look at all options available to you. I will tell you again, as a perspective, as a point of perspective, wasn't budget season four months ago. And I don't want to, uh, levy anything against anyone that spoke tonight. But some of the same people tonight, or I'm sorry, some of the same sentiment of how great the school system was three or four months ago when it wasn't budget season, it appears as if the bottom dropped out tonight because it's budget season. And that, on its face, cannot be true. Uh, and I realize that everyone has a role to play. Everyone has a job to do. Uh, but the reality is, is that, but these are real numbers. Real people live in this community. Real people pay this tax levy each and every year that this board struggles with raising in order to make decisions that are in the best interest of our community. And more importantly, in the best interest of our number one top priority constituency, our students and their families. So I offer that perspective, uh, because when you hear things like mismanagement, you hear things like options and you hear things like, we're willing to help. Uh, it all sounds good, but the people of West Orange, as long as I have sat in this seat, do help. They help to the degree of the maximum amount that this board can raise taxes each and every year without having to go out to referendum to ask them for even more money. So the community of West Orange does help. Uh, we pay a tax levy and have done so for the last several years to support our schools. Um, and I would say as a taxpayer, not as a board member, as a taxpayer, uh, that tax levy will be felt with even greater impact this year. That's just the simple reality of it. With that said, none of these decisions are easy. And I don't think any of my colleagues take our responsibility lightly. And so I hope that those that talk about these topics don't in any way assume that we take these issues lightly. I will say to you too, as a, as a parent of two elementary school children enrolled in our schools, it's disappointing to hear, and I wasn't going to say this, but I'll say it. It's disappointing to hear that class time was taken up on Friday or Thursday, whenever it was, to talk about budget stuff when people should be talking about what's going on in classes. And obviously, I don't know if, if, how, how in tune kids are to what's going on in the budget. But, but certainly, um, those conversations happen, right? And kids are concerned about what's happening in their classrooms. And obviously, and rightfully so, teachers are concerned. But that doesn't mean that, that this board takes it lightly. And I think that's the sentiment that I, that I wanted to share. There's a, there's a seriousness to this responsibility. And I think it's a seriousness that each and every one of us, um, have signed up for. And so I just hope that as we go through this process, that there is a sense of, of decorum, a sense of the reality of the numbers. A sense that in the last two years, where for a very period, long period of time, year over year, we were getting about $5 million a year in state aid increases. Our state aid has decreased since 2023, uh, by 5%. We've lost $1.7 million in the last two years. Those are real numbers. Our former board member who spoke at the mic, uh, talked about her experience as a board member. Uh, we appreciate her service as she was elected several times to serve on the board. Uh, maybe she also failed to recognize and to say openly that this district, like most districts, face a structural budget deficit year over year that doesn't go away and is sometimes offset by state aid. We no longer have that luxury. Our state aid is decreasing and is likely to continue to decrease. So perspective matters. Those citizens who spoke about their willingness to help, uh, while appreciated, I'm exercised to really understand what that means, to be quite honest with you. Uh, does that mean that you're going to walk and tell your neighbors, let's support a tax increase above the 2.3, that we go to referendum? I, I, I don't, I don't, I just don't know what that means. And so I just hope and really implore that the community looks at this realistically. Uh, Mr. Moore has a much more difficult job than the board members because it is he and his staff who have to, uh, look from A to Z in our district to really determine what cuts will be made. But what we all know sitting up here, as you saw the numbers before you, that inevitably cuts have to be made because even at the 2.3% maximum, we're still showing a deficit, a budget deficit that exceeds $8 million. And that's 8 million real dollars. So President Rock, I appreciate, uh, the time. Just wanted to, to share that perspective jointly as a board member, but also a taxpayer in this town. Thank you.
Go ahead.
First thing that I want to say is thank you for everyone who came to here today to advocate for our kids, for the teachers and for the community. As board members, as a grandparent, and we are going to, you know, try to, as you say, transparency, we are going to try to do the best job as possible. And as Mr. Moore say, we are not offering anything, but definitely, you know, you will have, try to see something positive will come after next meeting. Thank you for being here. You know, it's very, all the presentation, all the speeches that you did as a PTA members, as a teachers, as a community members, as a taxpayers. You know, it was very touching because, you know, we have to think about the kids, the future of this community. We have students who came here and speak, they were free to speak and do, express their, their feelings about it. And once again, thank you for coming. And we are going to really work hard, support Mr. Moore in order to bring the community together. Thank you.
Mr. Ripper?
Yep. Uh, thank you, uh, President Rock. So I think I had took a bunch of notes. I think I only have about three comments. I'm sorry, some of the speakers weren't able to stay after they spoke. But, um, the first thing I wanted to comment on was, I, I found the comments of President Rock to be so impactful and meaningful as a teacher, as a union person, much more valuable than anything I could say, speaking about your experience, um, in the classroom, dealing with budget cuts. I, I really found that to be so impressive. And I hope that anybody who was not here will, will listen to that or the word will get out that they, they should watch that. I really thought that that meant a lot, the, the credibility that you bring to this. So I, I appreciate that. The second thing I wanted to say was, you know, if I were in charge of this budget, the first thing I would do is I would, just to show our serio, our level of seriousness, I would say, let's make the board, let's not pay them. Let's make them do it voluntarily. Unfortunately, we're already volunteers, so there's no money to cut there. But when people come up to the microphone and say, yeah, you know, the children come first. We know, we know the children come first. It, it's tempting to find, try to find somebody who's doing something wrong or that we can blame or that if we can just, you know, shake them a little, knock some sense into them, things will work out. The numbers are the numbers. We could all be gone tomorrow and we'd still have the same problem. We, we're not getting enough money from Trenton. That's the end of it. And it, it's frustrating because inside people say, take it from the outside people. The outside people say, you need us. It, it's everybody wants somebody else to, to pay the piper and it's unfortunate, but that's the position we're in. The third thing I'll say, the last thing I'll say is that with all of the comments tonight, over all of this time, and I appreciated them and I love that people come. I, I wish people, more people came at every, to every meeting. The thing that struck me was, the only suggestions we heard were from the students talking about consolidating journalism and broadcasting and this and that. Suggestions is what we need. We know there's a problem. Um, but suggestions would be great. Um, rather than, you know, sometimes people like to impugn your motives or he's not serious or she's not listening or they're not for the kids. We're here for the kids. We love the schools. We love the town. We'll do anything we can to keep things moving in a sustainable way. This is not sustainable. This is not sustainable. You know, there's a sign in front of Liberty that says, ours is, I, I, I might have the words wrong. This is a, this is an age-friendly town, which means we respect and support our elderly. You know, we all have a problem with taxes, but the elderly have the worst problem with taxes. They're on fixed income, ha- half of them live alone. It's not easy. We have a lot to juggle here. The students, of course, come first, but we have a responsibility to the taxpayers. And I, you know, somebody said it earlier, I think it was Mr. Stevenson. Mr. Moore has the toughest job of everybody. He does, but I support him and he's going to do the best he can. We're going to help and we'll, we'll have to get through it as best we can. That's it. Thank you.
So first of all, I'm just inspired by the amount of folks that came out to voice their opinions and to advocate because in a moment where free speech is at risk, there is no better moment for our children to be out and to understand that their voices matter. For our teachers to be out, as a former teacher, to know that their voices matter and for our school leaders to be out. I'm incredibly inspired by that and I hope that folks continue to do that and share that message with their neighbors. As a parent of a child in 10th grade here and a third grader over at St. Cloud, slightly heartbreaking to think that an entire class period was used to talk about budget cuts. We spent the last five years talking about instructional loss. We've spent a ton of time talking about quality of curriculum, implementation of curriculum, fidelity of implementation, how we're getting things done. And to think that instructional time was used for that, if my daughter came home and said that to me, I, I would be infuriated, just being very honest about that. I love that people said, how can we help? Advocacy matters. Letters to your assembly folks, to your local legislator, to Trenton, things that, phone calls, the things that we always did to create a movement, they all still work. Right? And so while advocating to us allows us to work with the numbers that we have, advocating with folks at Trenton who represent us is also critical in this moment. And I can't stress that enough because our hands in so many ways are tied. And until they understand the circumstance and the impact of the circumstance on children, on communities, on families, on the longevity of who we are, we will just go overlooked. And so those voices have to raise up beyond this room, beyond the webcast, beyond the many Facebook, you know, chats and all the things. We got to make sure that people who we have put in power know and understand that they are empowered because of us. And that if we are not satisfied, we can make changes.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. I would just echo what Dr. Bryant there said at the end that we are, you know, live essentially at the whim of Trenton. So to the extent that you can do something, I think the, like she said, you're all welcome to come back here. We do appreciate advocacy and participation, but the answer is going to come from Trenton. So speak to your assembly people, speak to your senator who lives here in West Orange, speak to the governor and/or whoever you support in the governor's election. There's going to be an election this fall and that will be uh pivotal for what happens to schools, including West Orange, moving forward. Uh, but right now we are here to talk about a decision that we can make. That decision is the wise decision, I think, direct, to support the recommendation of the administration to adopt the preliminary budget with a 2.3% tax increase. Uh, it will not avoid all cuts, as we've discussed, but it will avoid doing self-inflicted harm that we do not need to do. And so I would encourage my fellow colleagues to support that uh preliminary budget. And if there's no other discussion, Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call?
Dr. Bryant?
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ifker?
Here. Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next may I have a motion to approve reports, item D1 through 2?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ifker?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much to my board colleagues for that. Next up, we will have petitions and hearings of citizens for any agenda or non-agenda item uh that you wish to discuss. You will have three minutes to speak. Please approach the podium at this time and state your name and address for the record.
I'm back. Deb Cohen, uh, High School. I actually came up, I moved myself up because I was just going to address how the journalism came to be. Those students were called by their guidance counselors and told they had to change the schedule because those classes are not being offered next year. It wasn't supervisors, it wasn't teachers. Some of the teachers didn't know till they found out from the students. So I just want to make that clear that that's how kids are finding out.
This is a preliminary budget. How, how would the teachers, are there anybody else, how would the guidance counselors know that classes wouldn't be offered next year that haven't been voted on?
I am a teacher and not privy to that information.
All right.
So I will leave it at that. However, in sitting here, I, I, I have to address some of the comments. First of all, the bottom hasn't dropped out of the district. We are trying. Our morale, to be quite honest, sucks. We are trying. This budget brings that morale down. And yeah, rumors have been flying since Friday. 11.2 was a big number and that was the number that we heard on Friday. The kids are initiating a lot of the discussion and no, we're not spending full periods. I spent 10 minutes today in one of my six photography classes because students brought it up and asked me what they could do. We then moved on and went to photography. However, in the journalism class, newspaper happens to take place in my classroom on one of my off periods. They talked about it from a journalism perspective. You know, so it's not, we're not spending time talking about this, but I will also point out that not for nothing, the students have concerns, they're learning critical thinking, they're learning problem solving, they're learning about how budgets work and what to do when they feel something is not right. They're important skills too. It's not all about the book learning. As for um looking for suggestions, it'd be great if the teachers were included. Those suggestions about combining broadcast journalism, newspaper and journalism have been flying around for three years. We've been trying to do it. The program got cut, broadcast got cut because the numbers were low. Broadcast got brought back. Well, of course the numbers are low. It got cut, so you're dealing with that. It's not just broadcast and newspaper and journalism. Those just happened to hit me hard with what's going on at the national level. Talk to us, we have suggestions. We will sit and brainstorm and work with you and figure it out. We understand the constraints of the budget. We're all smart, educated people. All we're asking is for a little more transparency because yes, there can be more. And to please make sure you're looking at outside the classroom as much as humanly possible. Obviously, we don't want buildings falling down either before you start cutting classes, teachers, et cetera. That's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, thank you very much. Our next board meeting will be held at 5:30 P M on April 28th, 2025. This meeting will be held on the West Orange High School Library Media Center. We will not be going into executive session after the close of this meeting. There will be no further business discussed and no additional action will be taken. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Executive session will begin at 5:30. Public session will begin at 6:30. Thank you very much for that. Uh, was there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Is there a second?
Yes, there is.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker, all in favor? Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our meeting is now adjourned. We wish you a good night.